All right, time's four o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, for roll call and possible action on the execution of any absent member of the governing board.
Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
President.
Commissioner Elisa Wajardo.
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a court.
Thank you. One B pledge of allegiance and invocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. God, you have entrusted us as ambassadors of your word. Please guide us as we carry out our work. We seek you first in all we do. We give you our residents, our leadership, our customers, our workforce, and our business. Let us always be mindful of their service. We confess that we are nothing without you, and our trust is in you completely. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Luis. Going on to item number two, proclamations. Two A proclamation proclaiming Joyce Mitchell Vaughn Day. Anybody here accept it? Come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioner Riley. For the record sale on East Parks and Rec Director. So I guess approximately four, five years ago, we had a city event, a fall festival outside here on the, which is now the Northside Park. And this, this individual here, she approached us, asking us if we were interested in this game called pickleball to add to our Parks and Rec list of programs. We had never heard about it. We, we went ahead and, you know, we spoke at a little bit more length. And I guess fast forward five years later, we have a very well-established pickleball program for Parks and Rec, something that Ms. Joyce here started for us five years ago. And we want to show you guys a really quick video. I don't want to take too much time, and then we'll, we'll let her.
Hi, I'm Joyce.
And I'm Jonathan.
Welcome to Pickleball with Joyce and Jonathan. Hey Jonathan, what is pickleball?
Well, pickleball is a fun sport for everyone. It is a combination of tennis, badminton, and ping pong.
And it's the fastest-growing sport in the United States. Also growing in popularity around the world. Come on, we'll show you.
Pickleball is great exercise.
Pickleball is challenging.
Pickleball is for friends.
And I love pickleball. Ho, ho, ho!
Pickleball's for family.
That's great. Very nice. Ms. Mom, would you make some comments?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, thank you very much. This is an honor, an unexpected honor. To play and promote and to teach an activity that I feel very passionate about is super easy. To start a program, though, from nothing and build it into what is now the premier program in the valley for players of all ages and all skill levels, that took some support.
Sure.
First of all, Sergio, Isaac, Sarah, the Parks, the Parks and Rec Department, believed in me from the moment I approached them like a crazy lady at the festival and had faith in me and my vision to build the program. Secondly, my parents who are here today, Mike and Elaine LaFallo, who not only encouraged me, but also anytime we needed volunteers or goodies or treats for, you know, tournaments or whatever, they were there. Thirdly, I need to thank my pickleball, ever-growing pickleball family. The, the people that showed up day after day, week after week, to come out and play with us, work with us around schedule changes and COVID regulations, and kept coming. They're our ambassadors. They reach out, they bring their friends, and they are welcoming to new players. And they take it easy on the new people, so y'all don't have to be scared when you come to play. And I also want to mention, I don't think he made it here. He just started his first year of college. But Jonathan, that you saw in the video with me, he came to us, barely 15 years old, started playing with us. I've had the, the pleasure of watching him grow, not only as a player, but as a, as a leader. His care and compassion and his concern for the safety of all of our players and his positive attitude and his work ethics have, have just, they're going to continue to help us grow the program. So all those people have made it possible for me to do this. This is not something I just snap my fingers and did on my own. But I do thank you very much. Thank you very much for the honor. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Congratulations, it was a great video.
Thank you. Well, and I should thank the media department. They've always done great things for us.
Where, where are your parents from?
Well, they, they're here in FAR.
From FAR?
They're what brought me to FAR to begin with.
Okay, well, good. Well, good. You know, this weekend, we had our hub fest, and they were asking me, probably in the spot and asked me, hey, what's one thing that you would describe FAR? What word would you use? I said, actually, I think it's love. So because we have love for the family, love for people, love for business, love for people staying healthy and keeping our community united, especially after the COVID and how we dealt with it as a nation. Said, but it's great to see how passionate you are about this. You know, I saw you guys at DRC in the FAR library, and I had no idea what you guys were doing. And there was people my age and very young people also, and I couldn't figure out what it, this ball with holes, like, what the heck are they doing? But it was, there, there was a big line that people really wanted to play this. So I'm glad you actually educated us here. They probably know, I didn't know what it was, but it looks very entertaining, very physical also.
Yes, some of the commissioners have been out and seen. Also, you know, you can play with your family. We had a lot of families that found the equipment at Walmart during the COVID break, and they just eventually heard about us here, and they came to learn the rules because they were just playing with their family out, outside when everyone was, you know, quarantining.
Right.
And they, they didn't know the rules, so they could come and learn and, and take it back home and, and play at home. So it's a, I've, I've seen women come in with, you know, and their bone resurfacing has restarted.
Yeah.
I've seen people come in with limited mobility and regain mobility. Families can come in and play together, and it's just a healthy life, lifetime activity. You know, it's a lifelong activity. You're not limited in age or skill level.
Yeah.
In fact, tomorrow from 4:30 to 7:30, everyone is invited to FAR Development and Research Center will be there playing. Come join us.
There you go. Well, great. Does anybody have any other comments before I read the proclamation?
I went, I was one of the ones who went by there during, wow, I was so impressed with everybody. Now, I was like, God, these people are older than me, and they're all here.
What were you wearing when you played?
I was wearing shorts. I was running, I'd been running, I was practicing for that marathon. You ran over there, right? Yeah, well, that felt better. No, no, I was like so impressed, I loved the organization that we were doing. I think I called, said hello right after. And I said, wow, this is amazing. This is something I'm sure is really good. And he, that's what he started explaining to me. And you all had told me how it started kicking off, and it was one of the fastest sports growing. So, but yeah, my hats off to you. Great job. Great job.
Good. All right. Whereas this day celebrates and raises regional awareness to the sport of pickleball and the impact it has had on the communities. And whereas the pickleball program is one of the fastest-growing sports in the Rio Grande Valley and has become an integral part of our community. Pickleball began in 1965. I didn't know that. And currently being played in all 50 states. And whereas the pickleball program is a fun, social, and simple game that combines elements of tennis and ping pong into one. The sport is played by using paddles and a plastic ball on a hard surface court, and it can be played indoor or outdoor. And whereas a pickleball program can be played at any age, from beginner to pro level, in all skill levels, thank Liz Bobby. Pickleball aids in building a healthy, active community by providing an enjoyable and active sports and improving the physical, mental, and emotional health of our community. And whereas the pickleball program was an idea brought to the City of FAR community by Joyce Mitchell Vaughn and is now offered for our citizens of all ages, of course, to participate in. Whereas we invite our citizens to be, to pick up a paddle and a ball to go experience the physical, mental, and emotional health pickleball brings to our community. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, takes up a virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the Mayor's Office and the City Commission, to hereby proclaim September 20th, 2021, as Joyce Mitchell Vaughn Day. In witness whereof, I hereby undertake my hand and causes, seal the City of FAR to be affixed on this 20th day of September, 2021. There you go. Congratulations. Would you honor us with a picture?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Congratulations. Move on to item three, public testimony. Any others, anybody else? Anybody signed up?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Arthur Flores. He has signed up to speak on consent item 6D.
Mr. Flores, 6D.
On the grant.
Yes, sir. I think you have three minutes.
Yes, sir.
My name is Arthur Flores, and I'm a resident of Hidalgo County. I request that the delivery of this notice be included in the minutes of this meeting.
Did you say Hidalgo County, City of FAR?
Hidalgo County.
Well, you're not a resident of City of FAR.
I'm resident of Hidalgo County.
That'd be a no. Go ahead.
As our city elected officials, you have received a copy of the Omega brief that has been delivered to every Texas House Representative and Texas State Senator, Lieutenant Governor, the Governor, and the Attorney General. This document contains irrefutable evidence of COVID pandemic criminal conspiracy and racketeering identified in patent filing by David Martin, Ph.D. Criminal charges are being filed for using the flawed PCR testing.
What does that do with the item? I'm sorry, I'm confused. You said 6D, right?
6D. You, you referenced a, a document that you were sending to the Governor. This is also a document that we have sent to the Governor. And we're sending it to all the, the different city and council.
Is this a, I'm sorry, this is a little confusing.
The item is to authorize City Manager to submit a grant application to the Governor. They haven't submitted, is asking for permission to submit a grant application.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we have already submitted these documents to the Governor.
That's good. But there's nothing to do with it.
It has nothing to do with the.
I don't think you understand the rules, so.
It's the border. If you have something to talk about, the 2022 Border Zone FAR Department Grant, then yes, you may talk, but it has to do with COVID.
I just want to make sure you understand the rules.
We understood the rules, but we also understood that you were submitting a document to the Governor. And we are also submitting a document to the Governor.
Four fire grant. This is not a fire grant topic.
Okay, so you're not going to.
This is, this is what it says. That's the rules.
Okay. Well, anyway, we have submitted these documents to all the.
Yeah, no, God be with you, but here, we follow the rules.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, sir.
All right.
You come back, and when we put that on the, on the agenda, if you like, but it's not on right now.
We'd like to put something on the agenda.
Yeah, if it's possible, okay? Just so you know. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On item number four, public hearing, anybody sign up? No? Item number five, City Manager's Report. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, I got three reports for you. One, submission of property tax collection for August 2021. We are point two nine percent higher than, than a last, this time last year, we had 95.96 collection rates, which is very good. Also, delinquent taxes collections are up also 6.42% towards better than last year. Item B, submission of sales tax report. We're 22.99% higher, and that's a true growth from this time last year. So we're doing pretty good.
Great.
Also, City Attorney has, has announcement. I'll pass it over to her.
Chris, will you come up, please?
Hi.
No. So for those of you who don't recognize her, this is Chriselda Hinojosa. We can call her Judge now, soon enough, right? So just on behalf of the city, Chris, we, we'd like to congratulate you on, on your appointment to, as Associate Judge by Judge Missy Madera for the Master Court, one of the family master courts in Hidalgo County. You guys know, she served the city for the last two and a half years. She started off as our prosecutor, and she most recently was bumped up to Assistant City Attorney. During her time here, she's been an invaluable asset to all of us. She's an excellent team player for the city. While we are sad to see you go, we're definitely, you know, very proud of you. We're proud of your work here, proud to have called you one of our own for this time, and we wish you the best in your legal career. And now I open up the floor to, to any comments you'd like to make.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to work here at City FAR. I did learn a lot. Been up and down, learned, quick-paced. I'm sure a lot of things I learned here, I'll be able to take with me into my next journey as a lawyer. My boss, Rigney, could probably have asked for a better mentor and boss to watch over. She really taught me a lot here, how to multitask, do things quick on your feet, you know, when y'all ask for stuff. But I really liked here, and it's a little sad to leave, but it's an opportunity I couldn't give up. It was something that I did think about, it wasn't quick to run away from here. But I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to be here, and thank you, Rigney, for helping me out, teaching me all the ways to be a better lawyer.
Good. Thank you. I'll go first. First and foremost, you don't have to say those nice things about her, just because she's next to you. Don't, you don't have to do that. Don't feel obligated. Yeah. No, it's been a real pleasure having you here. You know, it gives us great pride in the City of FAR, and I've said this to all, all our employees and leadership here. You know, you're not meant to stay here in the City of FAR forever. You guys hopefully go on, all of you, everybody, even, I expect even the people who are at entry level to rise and move up in the career ladder and move on to better, bigger things. That would give us so much joy and pride in the City of FAR because we're a part of your life. And the fact that you started in FAR, it says a lot for us that you're being looked at. We enjoyed you have, having you here. You are a true asset to the City of FAR, and I'm sure you'll be for the same judge position you're taking. And I wish you nothing but success. Please don't forget about us and forget where you started, and the big support that you have in the great City of FAR. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody have any?
Well, I know, I know the family personally, so, you know, your dad, I know him very well, your brother, and congratulations, and I wish you the very, very best. I know you're going to do a good job out there. I guarantee, so the people can all that, hey, you're going to be in good hands.
Yes.
Congratulations. Our loss is their gain. Good luck on that.
Thank you.
So before you leave, do you mind if we take a picture with you, Chris?
Sure.
Congratulations, Chris. All right, moving on. Item number six, Consent Agenda. All items are routine and non-controversial and can be enacted one motion, should you so choose.
Hope you approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, Mayor, I got a couple of things for executive session.
Okay. In accordance with section 551.071 to 551.087, the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convening an executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting, agenda, the time now being 4:19. Thank you.
Shall return.
All right, we're back, we're back in opposition. Time is 5:28.
Okay. Sorry, everybody, let's see where are we at?
We should be on seven.
Yes, sir. Seven, A, back in open session, seven A, consideration action, if any, on ordinance, amending Appendix A zoning, Article 7, Section 1.7087 to the Code of Ordinances. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, the third and final reading for this ordinance. Not for approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven B, consideration action, if any, on ordinance, setting speed limits on Samus Boulevard. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, second reading, staff is recommend approval.
Hope you approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Seven C, consideration action, if any, on ordinance, amending ordinance number 078-39, speed limits on Veterans Boulevard, which is I rode for the segment between Owasso Road and Havaliyah Drive. Second reading, staff is recommend approval.
Look to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seventy, consideration action, if any, on ordinance, amending ordinance number 02020-35, budget amendment for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Adoption on first reading, this is the final budget amendment that came to budget for this year, staff is recommend approval.
Say again. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes.
Thank you. Seventy, consideration action, if any, on ordinance, adopting tax rate for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Adoption on first reading, and we do need a record vote for this one. We have a motion?
Do we read?
Quietly.
Due to the increased valuation by the appraisal district, and I, according to, to the state law, I moved that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point seven one seven six cents, which is effectively a 1.92% increase in the tax rate.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Push. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Can hold it?
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Would you consider reviews?
Yeah.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner, please, one?
Yes.
Commissioner, please, two?
Yes.
Commissioner, please, three?
Yes.
Commissioner, please, four?
Yes.
Commissioner, please, five?
Yes.
Commissioner, please, six? Yes.
Anybody again? No? It passes.
Thank you. Seven F, consideration action, if any, on ordinance, adopting and approving budget year, begin October 1, 2021, and September 30, 2022. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, the final budget for next budget year. There were some changes that I wanted to make. I'm adding.
Discuss in executive session.
Okay, let's discuss.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Passes. Thank you.
Seven G, consideration action, if any, on ordinance, amending ordinance, 02021-27, Section 50-96, allowable charges, adding the charges for fixed wing and for special events. Yes, sir, it's the first in, the first of three readings. We are changing the EMS ordinance. We are looking to get into fixed wing, and of course, we cover special events, football games, stuff like that, so we need a charge for that, too.
Okay.
Look for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven H, consideration action, if any, a resolution support adoption and approval of Texas term sheet for opioid settlement proceeds. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, City Attorney can elaborate more on this one.
Mayor Commissioners, the Attorney General actually sued on behalf of several of the constituents, the pharmaceutical companies regarding opioid abuse by our citizens and by different persons in different communities. Most recently, they actually sent out a recommendation for different cities throughout the state to join this settlement, which is called the Texas Term Sheet. What they did is they took the settlement amount that they received from these pharmaceutical companies, and they're going to divide it up through the different communities based on how opioid abuse affected those communities. And they came up with a breakdown for the different cities. For example, their estimate for the City of FAR is $176,649 for the first payment, which would be in around March of 2022 with another payment around July. That, those settlement funds can actually be used by the city, by our police department for different programs that are going to allow us to combat the effects of opioid abuse on our constituents in the city and come up with different programs to help them. My recommendation after attending the conference and speaking to the Attorney General is that we approve the settlement so that we can join in that settlement and receive our funds, hopefully by March of 2022.
Look for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven, aye, consideration action, if any, approval or resolution declaring and its expectation to reimburse expenditures with proceeds for future debt. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, as we all know, we did approve, and the mayor did sign the nursing school agreement, so we're going to have a nursing school in FAR. We need to fund that one. In the meantime, we are spending city funds for that, so we want to be reimbursed.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven J, consideration action, if any, a resolution determining a public necessity to acquire certain real property, giving notice of an official determination to acquire real property for a public purpose, establishing procedures for the acquisition of property, determining the estate to be acquired, establishing fair market value for the property to be acquired, and directing the City Manager or designee to communicate offers to owners for purchase of property, appropriate funds, and authorized condemnation proceedings by City Attorney, and ratification of prior acts. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, at the last EDC budget workshop, y'all instructed me to go after an industrial incubator building. This is for start negotiations with Greg Windor for the advance. We're going to that building.
Okay.
Was it approved? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight A, consideration action, if any, on authorized City Manager to purchase servers for the citywide fiber project from SHI Government Solutions Incorporated through by board cooperative contract number 579-19, and the amount not to exceed $110,115.88.
$110,115.88, not 110.
Hundred, hundred thousand, hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Okay. Second. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Passes.
Eight B, consideration action, if any, authorized City Manager to purchase cybersecurity appliances for the citywide fiber project from SHI Government Solutions Incorporated through Texas DIR Cooperative Contract DIR TSO 3984, the amount not to exceed $102,688.
Look for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, eight, T, consideration action, if any, authorizing City Manager to purchase fiber network equipment for the Citywide Fiber Project from Solid IT Networks, Inc., through Texas DIR Cooperative Contract DIR TSO 4339, in amount not to exceed $460,134.32.
Vote to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, nine, A, consideration action, if any, authorizing City Manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Isicelo Antonio's Animas DBA Border Infrastructure Consulting LLC for professional consulting and lobbying services. Yes, Mayor Commissioners.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Two, nine, B, consideration action, if any, on acceptance of the South FAR Development Research Center Time Capsule Phase One as complete and authorizes a final release of payment and retains the amount of $2,487.50.
Vote to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Nine, C, consideration action, if any, on acceptance of South FAR Development Research Center Time Capsule Phase Two as complete and authorizes release of final payment and retains the amount of $2,499.95.
Vote for approval, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you, nine, D, consideration action, if any, authorizing City Manager to enter into an agreement with Pyro Shows of Texas for their Veterans Day fireworks displayed to be held November 6, 2021.
Second.
Are we going to take into account the location, and last time, the height was an issue?
Yes, sir, so what we did, we found a new location on West Lasmitpas, correct? I'm sorry, East Lasmitpas Road, where we were firing them before was in the floodway, so we were 20 or 30 feet below grade, so that's how they come forward.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, nine, F, consideration action, if any, authorizing a correction. Correction, nine, E, consideration action for approval of 2021 PSJ ISD FAR Police, K-9 Police Agreement for K-9 Services at PSJ ISD Schools and Mill School.
Vote to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, nine, F, consideration action, authorizing City Manager to award a service contract for self-funded employee health insurance benefit plan, self-funded pharmacy benefit management services, and individual and aggregate stop-loss insurance. And we do have Lone Star, which is our rep in the audience, and our HR Director here, too. So, any questions?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, one exception just for excess precautions.
Thank you, nine, G, consideration action, if any, authorizing City Manager to award a contract for service to the lowest bidder, Pavement Marketing, Inc., out of Donna, Texas, for the installation of thermoplastic pavement markets for Public Works.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Just Commissioner.
I mentioned to the City Manager that in the, in the future, you can add up all the amounts at the end, because I don't see, even though it's the lowest bid, but I would like to see
The actual number on there.
The number, the number that we can see.
Yes, sir, apologies for that.
Not a problem. Any further, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, nine, H, consideration in action, if any, authorizing City Manager to extend a supply contract with Chemtrade Chemicals, US LLC, out of Parsi, Penali? Penani? Parsippany? Parsippany, New Jersey, for the purchase and delivery of aluminum sulfide liquid polymer blend and liquid ammonium sulfate.
Vote for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
For the water plant, sewer plant. Nine, I, consideration action, if any, authorizing City Manager to extend, Item Number One, service contract to generate chlorine dioxide. Item Number Two, supply contract for the purchase and delivery of sodium chloride. And Item Number Three, lease of new equipment from Equal Water Technologies LLC out of Sarasota, Florida.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?